At the last meeting, I heard the selectmen ask a question in regards to any other use of the land, any other commercial interest was being asked of the town. Two nights later, I was at the planning and zoning meeting, uh, I'm sorry, I should first answer that if the response was no, there's no interest in the town. Two nights later, I was at the planning and zoning meeting and there was interest in Rebeckers property as a vineyard. It's just reminiscent of Frank D. Felice withholding information from me and from the rest of the commission for eight months. It just appears as though there's more information being given. It's just upsetting to...
There is a person who is interested in coming to the town of Durham to open a winery. There is no property that he's looking at. He's coming in to discuss what he would have to do to get permitted to run a wine- winery.
You're correct. I misspoke when I said Rebeckers. Dave Rebeckers told... you are correct. But it was asked to look into this quickly because someone's interested in opening a winery or a tasting room. And I just thought it was ironic because at this meeting here, the last meeting, there was all this discussion of the friendly planning and zoning board creates the opportunity, creates flow of commercial interest with the town. And having a good planning and zoning board creates this atmosphere that's conducive for that sort of thing. And Frank just didn't seem to understand the concept that in order for this interest to take place, for a vineyard to come, they certainly aren't going to invest millions of dollars in this town without understanding whether that's even approved. And he says, oh, don't worry, we can tackle that under the special use event stipulation of planning and zoning, which it wouldn't be. It would be a permanent open five, six, seven days a week business. And he didn't seem to understand that. And it goes back to the whole thing, if you want this to be, a town opens a commercial business, you need great leadership. If we do not have great leadership, which I've been saying for a long time, Frank is a problem in this town. He doesn't get it. He's been a problem for years. My two cents, you want business here or you're not going to get it with Frank?
Thank you. Any other public comment? Martin?
Hi. I would echo that I think is, we could be ahead of, get ahead of the curve. And hopefully now that we have a part-time planner, that would be just the sort of item that I hope that planner would deal with was create, you know, looking at real vineyard, real places that encompass it all. We have them surrounding us, so it wouldn't be that hard to plagiarize some other regulations from other towns or at least talk to them about what worked and what didn't. Hopefully, that's the kind of thing our planner money will be spent on. Specifically, what I wanted to comment on, I wanted to ask the Board of Selectmen, the members of the Board of Selectmen individually, whether they intended to further investigate or interfere with or influence the selection of chairman on other boards and commissions. And I'd like to get an understanding of what you think your role is as a board in that process. And I hope to hear from each of you.
I don't see any way to interpret the charter or statutes unless specifically stated that the Board of Selectmen is involved in choosing officers of other boards. When it is specifically stated, and I can mention at least one place where it is, and that is if the Board of Finance votes and it ends in a tie vote, then it does revert to the Board of Selectmen. But if you are asking me my opinion on a general basis, that unless it's otherwise put in charter or statutes, I believe it is the purview of each commission to elect their chairman, vice chairman, et cetera.
So I think it's very important that we follow the charter.
Is that tie vote part of the charter or is part of state statute?
State statute.
We basically are an oversight board. We're not voting to elect a chairman at all. So we're just making sure that the agencies and boards follow the town charter and do as requirements fulfill. So if someone's late in filing minutes, you know, outside the seven day rule, we can ignore that or things of that nature. But the boards run themselves. We're an oversight board.
Any other public comment? Joe?
I'll start with the comments about the planning and zoning commission. And with the, I understand you had a conversation with some individual interested. Is it for, we were told it was for a vineyard. Is it a vineyard or a winery? There's a difference.
Winery, vineyard, there is interest in a tasting room. So it's not just to grow grapes. It's for the whole kit and caboodle.
The second item I had was the consultant that was hired to review the EMS report. Will that be put on the town website?
It already is.
Where is it? But it is available on website?
Oh, yeah.
And last, item number 14 on the agenda, the letter from Regional District 13.
Yes.
Will that be available also on the website?
Um, the letter's not, I can give you a copy of it.
Okay.
It's a two paragraph letter that says, we are now prepared to give you corn squall at no cost. We will help facilitate the transfer. And we, we don't, the Board of Ed has vote, met and discussed. And we, they, in their opinion, the best use is as a municipal use. And if the town declines the offer, they probably will seriously consider demolition. That's what the letter says. But come on in, I could give you a copy of it. Any other public comment? Okay, nominations to fill vacancies. Any nomination for ag commission? Any nomination for Board of Finance? Any nomination for inland wetlands? I will make a motion to nominate Gary Sheldon to fill the alternate position on the water commission. Gary is, she lives on Maple Avenue. He's not currently on the water system, but when the new public water system is built, he will be on it. He is a partner in a law firm in Hartford and thinks he'll be a great fit. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? I'd like to make a motion to appoint Maya List to the zoning board of appeals alternate vacancy.
I'll talk to her.
Maya does come recommended by the Democratic Town Committee. She was on the ballot this year and was not seated during that process. And she lives on Main Street. All those in favor say aye? Item number five, is there a nomination for the opening on conservation commission?
No.
Okay. Item number six, discussion regarding the sale of surplus land. In your packet is the up-to-date list and suggested bid language. This has been reviewed. We're at a point in time now where we just have to pull the trigger and decide on a timeframe. My suggestion would be March 1st.
My question is number two, I thought was getting removed.
Oh, yes. Guilford Road, no, not Guilford Road. It was, um, no, it's not Guilford Road. It was Wallingford Road was removed.
Right.
Because Conservation Commission felt that that should remain.
Stagecoach Road.
And Stagecoach Road.
It's still on here, so.
That was what we...
All right, so this was not updated, only this one was updated.
The one that's in your list. So it's Barber Lane and Cameron Road, Guilford Road, Hickam Road, Side Hill Drive, 54R Turkey Hill Road, 30R Turkey Hill Road, and Crooked Hill Road. So guidance, March 1st, a good timeframe for you to pull this trigger?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if I could ask, I just, I could use a little guidance on what to, like how many bid packages to prepare? And, you know, I've never put anything out to bid. So, you know, that just the logistics.
Oh, yeah. We can, we can help you with that. I mean, it'll be online and it's, it's a one-page application. So most people will probably download it and fill it out that way. But yes, we will, we'll need some printed copies and we can do that in-house.
And post the, will post a legal notice having the, like, three weeks for that data, sir?
I think three weeks is adequate. That's what we talked about before.
And, and no minimum bid?
No minimum bid is what we decided. The last Board of Selectmen decided that. George, do you have an opinion on that?
Minimum bid?
We have the ability via our ordinance to put in a minimum bid requirement. For instance, you know, we'll take nothing less than X amount of dollars.
The appraised value?
So each one of these pieces has some challenges to them. Now, the two that are worthy of discussion are probably number five and number six, the ones on Turkey Hill Road. They are developable. However, there are some slight challenges there. It was, those two property in the foreclosure action were put out to bid, not bid. They were put up for auction and there were no bites. Of course, it could be, it could be because we were asking for recoup of the legal fees as part of that foreclosure action.
And Crooked Hill as well was that foreclosure sale with no bids.
Right. So we have the ability via our ordinance, we could put the appraised value, not appraised, assessed.
I mean, the assessed value is at 7%?
Yes, and, but it's from 2015 and it's, they, they haven't been, I, I think because there was no specific owner or things, I would, I would question the accuracy just because there wasn't a interested party. I've never filed an appeal for a piece of property that the town of Durham owns.
So you're concerned that might be too high?
Yeah. I, I think there's a formula that they use. So if it's, you know, one acre, it's this amount. If it's two acres, it's twice that, kind of.
Those two, those two properties were part of a subdivision that successfully sold. Even when it was an active subdivision, those two lots were challenging.
Which may have led to why they didn't sell.
So are you proposing no minimum?
The last board decided that, but we can change that. We could, we can put a portion of the assessed value, 50% of it.
Let me look at the assessed values and talk about the next meeting.
We didn't hear that, sorry.
George asked, he's, he was going to review the assessed values and then we'll discuss it. We have time. If we're going to go out to bid March 1st, we have some time.
So will you still make a motion on the March 1st bid?
I'll make a motion to go, to go out to bid March 1st.
I'll second that.
And then if, we have time to decide the minimum bid before then.
Right.
Okay. All those in favor say aye? Aye.
Yipstein?
George, you asked for a legal opinion or a request for a legal opinion to be on the agenda on particular town charter 6.8. So what I was hoping to get out of tonight's discussion was an exact question about, because you did bring up a lot of things in your email that are worthy of discussion.
Right.
But to get an opinion of specifically section 6.8, I think I would like some exact wording. It helps to...
Well, in general, for the record, I would like to, again, before we get into any charter revision talk now or in the future, I'd like to make sure that we're abiding by the existing charter and especially some of the requirements that were changed in 2006, requiring more diligence by the Board of Selectmen in certain areas, such as filing a comprehensive financial plan with the town clerk, new addition, the monthly financial review that we're doing quarterly to be on file with the town clerk within 30 days of review. The 2006 revisions required more, more stipulative approach to what we're not doing. So from this board's perspective, somehow or other, it's turned into, and we're going to be discussing it tonight, a quarterly financial review as opposed to a monthly per charter required financial review.
We're going to be, no, we're going to, going to get back to that.
Well, that's my point.
And we have one.
If it is spelled out, it is our required duties that, the ones that we agreed to as a group that we start enforcing. If we decide to do a charter revision down the road and want to change that, so be it. But for right now, again, for full transparency, I'd like to do what we're supposed to do going forward. So the joint meeting, I did see a review by attorney Slater here that I really have not a chance to review. But it's as simple as saying, if John doesn't go to the meeting or hadn't, or Tom didn't, or I don't, if it's a selectmen meeting, you don't have a quorum, you don't have a meeting. So again, if it's a board of selectmen meeting, let's make sure it's posted that way. Make sure there's quorum. And it is part of the process for interfacing and supervising and making sure we're all on the same page. What I again propose to do, if I'm reading the requirement correctly, it is a comprehensive, and I define the word comprehensive, long-term financial plan and a comprehensive long-term plan for the town that I don't really think we have. I would propose to create one, update it. We clearly do that requirement for the procurement policy, which is again, a requirement in the same section of the charter. We do update that annually. We do do it through the Board of Selectmen. It's our requirement. If we put the ducks in a row, we agree as a board, I don't need legal opinion on that. Point was pointing out the fact that we're not doing this. So there's a void, a lack of oversight that if you take all of these things and put them together, you know, we could be lost as a board. So if we are in agreement that we take first crack at it, from a legal opinion perspective, my opinion is, the way the charter spells out, the Board of Selectmen is responsible for reviewing whether it's beginning a legal action, ending a legal action, reviewing a legal action. It says in the charter that it's our review. And again, the exact language, and it's only eight words, so it's kind of hard to mess it. But under direct duties of the Board of Selectmen, we are to institute, prosecute, defend, or negotiate any legal action or proceeding by or against the town. Again, if we're going to do a charter review and if that is not our purview legally, then we're going to need to change that. But if planning and zoning has special rules and considerations per state statute, so we cannot get involved in that, then we should carve that out and say what they are and what we are and make sure that we are following the doctrine. Again, the whole pretense is that the town of Durham operates under home rule. So our first and primary document is our town charter. We have the right to govern ourselves. If the town charter is silent, then you go to state statute. But if you're going to create a legal issue by enforcing a charter because there is a loophole, I just assume know that. So instead of just going through revision, let's go through the process of, do we do it? Is it wise? Is it something that we should be doing going forward? Why aren't we doing it? But under, again, general duties of the Board of, or Board of Selectmen, under town council, not only are we supposed to review all legal matters, but if any border agency outside of planning and zoning has a request for legal opinion, it's supposed to float through the Board of Selectmen in writing according to charter. So if zoning board of appeals or someone wants council, town council to go to those meetings, we should be in the loop. We should be aware of it. We should be aware of what our legal costs are. If we're not getting multi-financial statements or updates on most of these costs, we're running up legal bills and the Board of Selectmen, who is supposed to be supervising these boards, has no idea where we stand today. So by my estimation, so far, legal fees, you put it all together, you just add up minutes, we're close to $35,000, $36,000 against a budget of 18. And I technically don't know that yet because we haven't had that discussion. I don't know where town council is. That's just P and Z with it. So again, if we were more involved in the budgetary review, we're supposed to do invoices. If we knew the finance, are we within budget? Are we out of budget? What's the problem? And again, any information that we can get from a legal perspective. So if John has a legal question or I have a legal question, I will say again, for the record, 99.9% of the time, I would say that, yes, you should run shotgun with that. But the way that I read this and the way that my corporate attorney reads this is it has to be decided amongst the board. So the day-to-day operations, I agree. But if there's something that we feel we might be off track on, is an opinion warranted? Does the board agree? And who does, in this instance, the board want to run the question by the attorney? So there's the give and take back and forth. To get something in writing stating, you know, six of the 12 issues I raise, it, it's more than a written word I'm looking for. It's a, this creates a question, can I ask?
Right. And, and, well, your email went to Ken, so he answered and...
But he answered?
He answered.
A couple of them.
He answered to further this discussion.
Right. But again, in that instance, I would ask...
This is not an opinion.
I would ask him, if you think this, then what about that? I mean, there's a give and take back and forth to a dialogue.
Right.
So just to get my arms around the fact that we're doing, the powers and duty is assigned to the Board of Selectmen, that I'm doing my job. I want to make sure that I'm doing what I was sworn to do. And if there is a question like that, I want to be able to talk to him face-to-face or over the phone. Or he says something, I say, yeah, but what if? Because it's me, and if we are in agreement as a board, as a group of three, that that is how we can run council, then, then I'm good with it. But if it is your opinion that you don't want anyone to talk to the council but you, then I'm going to have to say that I need council's opinion on that. But if it's a board opinion, I would assume, and again, if there's legal costs and we blow through budgets, I want to know about it sooner than later.
So it's been longstanding practice. Back to my town clerk days. If, if I had a question for town attorney, I couldn't pick up the phone. I would walk down the hall to the first selectman, explain why I needed town council, and I would get the green light. I don't remember ever a time, from the town clerk's office anyway, where that was an out-of-control thing. So it was never an issue. In fact, I, other than planning and zoning, or maybe other than, you know, Mary Ann, I know, had to go to the board when she wanted to challenge the power lines. That, she knew that that was going to go over and above the appropriated town council line. And I, and she went to the board and said, I know we discussed. And, and so I think you and I are in agreement that in major legal affairs that would be over and above general council, then that's a decision this board has to make together. Are we going to sue, you know, the power lines? Are we going to sue the redistricting? Are we going to sue the gun range? These were all big decisions that had high-cost ramifications. And, but for day-to-day stuff, I know I was never told no by first selectman. And I don't remember ever saying no to anybody.
For ongoing council, and again...
Your ongoing council.
I don't think that's an issue.
Right.
My concern is if we have a problem as a board or as an individual on board, or John has a problem or has a question, I would like him to be able to talk to us about it. We agree that he can run lead on that and talk to council.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
And if any board outside of the zoning boards has requests for council, I would like to be brought in the loop to at least know through email or something that there's another request out there.
So land use boards have always been considered separate.
Correct.
Okay? So for histories perspective, our town council was always a generalist and admittedly didn't have the expertise required for land use. And so for many, for decades, the land use boards had their own attorney. Not every time, but often enough, that attorney would be at meetings.
Right.
And are you suggesting that if they require that, desire that, that this board needs to give approval?
No, not land use boards, I'm saying are exempt from that with the caveat. And this, this kind of what brought a lot of doubt. If I go to a ZBA meeting and Steve Byrne is there... If I go to a ZBA meeting and Steve Byrne is there, representing somebody other than ZBA because Town Council is also there, we have two attorneys in a room on one land use issue that technically didn't even go before P and Z, but we're running up a legal bill on something that if, again, we're in that discussion and we know, how many attorneys do you assign to the same issue? And, you know, what's the purpose? So if P and Z attorney is going to represent ZBA, then that's fine. But if Town Council is going to go do ZBA, then I'm saying, wait, why is Ken Slater also there? Because Steve Byrne couldn't be the first day or something?
Well, no, he would have been there had he not been out of town.
There was too many...
The reason why the second attorney was brought in is because the appeal was on a finding by the zoning enforcement officer that Steve Byrne had already rendered some guidance and opinion on. There was a conflict there, because he was representing the Planning and Zoning, the permitting agency. So it wasn't an appeal of the permit, but it was an appeal of the finding based on that permit. And Steve Byrne didn't feel that he could adequately represent...
To which...
It was a very unique situation.
No, I understand. But to which he has a conflict of interest, he steps back, Town Council takes over, is also versed their firm in land use issues. He could read the opinion as well as anyone else. I just want to pay double for a single issue.
So it is also...
Because again, two attorneys, you've got two opinions.
So it is also practice that if anybody's line item goes over, any line item, any department, it's got to be reported to the Board of Finance. So, and often, the Finance Director will warn somebody that their budget's going over. So it is being reported to the Board of Finance, and we could have it be reported to us as well. But again, what is the remedy?
Duties of first selectmen is to provide monthly written financial reports and analysis to the Board of Selectmen. So if we know it, you would also tell us.
Tell us.
So we know it as well, and that's your remedy. So if it's gone over, again, if we're being sued, we play out the suit. I mean, you're going to run over. We're aware of it. We're not blindsided in a town meeting. All I want is knowledge.
So you're asking for information. You're acknowledging that this board is not the gatekeeper for that.
Well, no. What we are, we're a supervisory authority to all boards and commissions. Says it right in four point three point one. We're responsible for supervising the affairs of the town and shall guide all town officers, boards, agencies, commissions, and committees toward accomplishing the objectives of the town long-range plan that we don't have. So if we're the supervising agency, I just, I want to be in the know when things go off track.
Fair enough.
And again, if there is an opinion outside of the land use boards, if it's a simple, you know, again, if it's something that, you know, we might have made a problem, I want some written opinion. If you're able to write an email to an attorney, you're able to CC us. That's all I need.
Okay. And just for historical purposes, Town Council budget, that line for Town Council, often under-expended, rarely, rarely, out of control. That being said, we're responsible for watching everything.
Exactly.
Okay.
So are we in agreement that we will discuss the legal issues, and if any one of us has an issue, we talk about it as a board? Vote on proceeding with the review, if so warranted? And for example, if John has an issue on something, he can talk directly to council?
Yes, we are in agreement. But I want to add to that...
That we talk about it.
That sometimes it's informational and reporting, because as you stated, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it's going to be something that I got to address on a day-to-day basis, and may not wait two weeks for a meeting.
But if it's a conflict that John thinks he has, or the town has, or something, as long as he can protect himself, I can protect myself. I mean, there are issues, again, in a state statute, that if we don't do something, we face a civil penalty as a selectman of the town. I don't know if the treasurer is bonded, but if the treasurer's not bonded...
Treasurer is bonded.
I get fined.
The treasurer is bonded.
So again, I asked that question because I knew that part of the statute, but I just want to make sure that we have access if needed. But if we follow the procedures, and from a financial review perspective, I don't know how big a deal it is, because again, we're going to do that tonight, and it talks, you know, in generalities. If there's a budget worksheet, that'd be great. You know, that's what we're used to seeing. You can see the line item and not just, you know, thirty million dollars or whatever the case might be.
So let me just also say this. So you're the fifth selectman that I've worked with. Each one has wanted their own way to be on this board. Each one had his own level of involvement that he wanted. And we talked about how to proceed. And that's what I would like to do with this board. If you would like to see a report done in a different way, let's talk about it.
I will. And that's fair. That's fair to say. But I mean, if you're looking for my hot button, it's transparency and charter. That's it.
Okay.
If we follow the charter...
So let's go to the charter. So I did get an opinion, because it was clear at our last meeting that there was a question on validity of an action that the Board of Finance took. And what this opinion says is that the charter, while it is our guiding document for how we want to do business, if there is no penalty or action that is required if an action isn't taken, the courts will say it's directory. And so let's come to some agreement on how we are going to interpret the direction that this charter is giving us.
Can we go back to the first part?
And I got to, I have to say this, that some practices I've changed, but some practices have just been the way we've done it. If those practices ought to be changed, I'm all in to have that discussion. And I...
Well, in that scenario, let's say a charter requirement is that the town has a comprehensive, long-term financial plan.
Right.
There's no damages if we don't, but it says we shall.
We should, so...
Not that we should, we shall.
So we don't have a book, a binder that says long-range comprehensive plan. But we do have elements that would go in it, right? We have a plan of conservation and development. We have a budget that we certainly are guiding. We've adopted fiscal policies. We have capital plans that we have passed. We have fleet replacement plans. We have a lot of elements that I think could go into that document that you would like to see.
I agree. We should be able to do it, but it also says the Board of Selectmen shall.
So you have offered...
Not that we should, but that we shall.
You have offered to do that.
Correct.
And I'd like to take you up on that offer. I believe it would be this body that would then accept it. But I also would argue that we have a decentralized form of government. We have powers and authorities dispersed amongst a lot of different boards. And I would like to think that this comprehensive plan would be considered a guiding document.
Absolutely.
And not a hammer, that if something's not in it...
Right.
That we can't contemplate it.
It can't be. But as a, as a town, I mean, we're in a boat as a crew team, and we're hopefully all rowing together. And when you're not, you're going in circles. So if there's something that's obvious, and that we all agree economic development should be focused on commercial industrial, something of that. If we could get into an agreement that we need to expand our industrial parks, P and Z is on board with that, figure bang for your buck. If we agree to that kind of a generalized direction, and then, you know, I mean, it changes, it changes. But if we're all pulling in the same direction and say, you know, this should be a focus, and it's a focus for you, it's a focus for us, it's a focus for whoever else is involved in that process, it's not every process. If you want to talk about bookkeeping, maybe there's, you know, a new doctrine, maybe there's a new package that we should be focused toward. Communication systems with what we just did last year for the centralized communication, how you did this huge turnover for hundreds of thousands of dollars, if that's part of the plan, that's the direction we want to go. It's not like this year, the plan came up and we're there. It's comprehensive, long-range. So we know five years in ahead, we've got a problem here, we need to address it, or the wheels fall off the bus. John brought up today, you know, police force. I mean, do we do something in that vein if the Board of Selectmen is in agreement that we might want to shift gears? Do we buy into it, have the public buy into it, or we keep doing what we're doing? I mean, status quo is a choice.
Yes, but I don't want you to infer, though, that this, that the Board of Selectmen, this iteration or others, Board of Finance, Planning and Zoning, that nobody, we have looked to the future. And that's evidenced in decisions that we've made, budgetary decisions we've made, other policy decisions that we've made. But what I think we need, what we didn't do, is put that all together.
And there's things that we haven't done. I mean, we're, we probably will have an issue in the next five, ten years in the fire department like we have now in the ambulance department.
Absolutely.
You're depending on volunteers, you're depending on infrastructure. You know a building is in need of update, upkeep, renovation, new bay, whatever the case might be. If we know that is the case, then we act accordingly.
Right.
And again, you don't want to be caught flat-footed and have the ambulance department come to you and say, you know, next month, we're out of business. Does that sound familiar? Yeah.
You didn't catch me flat-footed on it.
If we, if we have a plan and a Plan B, or even a direction that this is something, this is the year of the ambulance department.
So happy to work with you on that. I just don't want it to be used as a hammer.
It's a tool.
Okay. I want acknowledgement of that.
That we're all saying, charter says we should have it. If we put all these pieces together, realistically, ninety percent of it is in the plan of conservation and development. It's there. But that was taken on by P and Z with the aid of the charrettes and the public in large. We need to sign into that. We need to buy into it and say, yes, and that goes along with our...
We actually did take an affirmative vote. It's required of this board to affirmatively accept it.
But the charrette, or the plan is a state document, state requirement. This is a charter requirement. So charter first.
So you mentioned the joint boards. So again, preference of the sitting board members. I was asked not to notice that as a Board of Selectmen meeting, because often, the selectmen didn't come. And they wanted to not have to come.
Right.
You know, there were, there were years that we didn't do it. I mean, going back many, many years. So your point is taken that if there is a meeting, there should be minutes. But basically, that meeting is just a what's going on in your boards and commission meeting.
I understand how it's been run, but I'm saying...
So how does this board want those joint meetings to go?
See, I don't, I don't think we even have that choice. And I don't think we have a choice of deciding what provision we enforce and what we don't.
I don't, I'm not suggesting that.
But when I see, well, you said that, your other board has said we don't have to do it. If it says the Board of Selectmen shall be responsible for holding joint meetings at least twice a year, that's not an option. If the charter says that we shall do it, it doesn't say we can do it, or maybe we should do it. It says we shall.
Right. But it doesn't say that they have to attend.
If you don't have a quorum, you don't have a meeting. It does say that we also have to record everything that happened at the meeting. Again, the intent, I think, is, and I just want to be on the tent, that we are aware of what the other people in town are doing. It's a communication effort.
It's a communication meeting.
It's not, again, you know, your hammer, your nail. It's like, what are you guys up to? And it's more boards and commissions than, and I would very much encourage this, boards and commissions versus staff. It's not, you're in charge of staff. You are the chief executive officer. Everyone in the town hall reports to you. You know what's going on in staff. So within that world, you know, other than the elected officials, if the elected officials are involved, then that's great. But it really is what's new, what's going on, what do you need, what might you want long-term?
So the only requirement via FOI, the only thing that it absolutely requires is a record of votes. And at that joint board and commission meeting, there is never a vote taken on anything. That being said, there is historical value in recording what gets recorded. And it should be done. We should be filing the minutes.
And again, I mean, on that point, we can agree to disagree. The charter says the items discussed shall be appropriately recorded. So again, the word shall is the sticking factor. I understand what FOI requirements are for motions, but...
Hey, guys, we're on number seven. Hold on, we're on number seven on the agenda here, which is...
We are agreeing. I'm not disagreeing.
Guys, hold on, we're out of line. We're talking about things that...
We're not out of line.
Yes, we're on number seven. Request for origins for legal opinion, six point eight. We've talked about fifteen other topics in the last twenty minutes, and you guys will keep going on and on. Why don't we go through the agenda, and then during selectman comments, that this can come up again? But I think we owe it to the people here to go through the agenda, because we've gone off of six point eight, which is what I...
We haven't.
We have, kind of have.
They're all included.
Owe it to our board member who would like to establish a way to operate.
I get that, but all I'm saying is we've got a ton of things on the agenda. We could bring this back up.
We've covered a few things today. Let's continue this conversation.
I think we should continue it, but I just also want to be, that we've got other people here to move on as well. So it can come up again at the end under selectman comments.
I think we're more in line than...
I agree. I would like to make, on the legal opinion portion, we did exactly what we said last meeting we were going to do. George reemphasized that his point, and I appreciate what he did back on the legal opinion, but we did exactly the opposite of that in going out and getting a legal opinion, because we didn't vote last meeting to go get a legal opinion. So just arbitrarily...
Nothing in that, nothing in this charter prevents me from seeking a legal opinion.
I think tonight, earlier, about half an hour ago, in the beginning of this conversation, George had made the point that an issue comes up, the Board of Selectmen will decide on an issue, who talks. Now, ninety-nine percent of the time, it will be you. However, there may be...
And this time, it was me.
But we never even decided to...
You made some serious allegations at the last meeting.
We never decided to go to get a legal opinion. We never decided to do that.
And I don't need you to.
Well, I, okay, I think that is what George initially brought up in six point eight. And that is needed, because it does say the Board of Selectmen, not the first selectman. Okay? So I think you did something you shouldn't have done. You went out and got a legal opinion on your own, and that's exactly to George's point. So that's all I'll say about this, because that's what we're talking about on number seven. So I think we should move on to number eight and move on with the meeting.
Well, we'll continue this conversation, because it really does come down to how does this board want to operate.
Exactly. And that's what I was asking a legal opinion on, so...
And...
It's all in there.
Further review of Ken's response to you, it kind of, you know, gives us some guidance. But at the end of the day, it's really what we're comfortable in how we're interpreting this document. It is interpretive unless it's prescriptive. It's directionary unless it's, has consequences or it's directory. So let's get consensus of how we want to operate. And we have a joint board and commission meeting coming up, so we're going to have to talk about that. All right? Um, oh, local traffic authority, you did have a question about Fowler Avenue, Jerry Lane and Fowler Avenue.
We, we didn't follow up on that.
Yeah, let's follow up on that because I have some answers on that. Okay? All right. Where'd my agenda go? Right here.
Market Master.
Market Master. So, um, if you're comfortable, we can approve this today. Um, the Market Master is working tonight, so he's not here to answer any of your questions. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to, um, get them answered for you. If you do not and you're comfortable approving, then I will entertain a motion to do so. The changes are in red.
I'm fine with it, but if he wanted to be here, um, I don't mind waiting. There's no rush over the winter, but-
So he normally works on Monday nights.
Okay.
So if you have any questions, I'd like to have him so that he can prepare a question or prepare the answer.
I'm fine with it.
And if we needed a discussion, you know, maybe we can in advance, um, pick a time where he might be able to, you know, take a few minutes outside of his work schedule to take a call.
You want to make a motion, John?
Could you make one, Harry?
No, I said, I don't-
Make a motion to accept.
Second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number nine, I'll make a motion to give approval to the Durham Volunteer Fire Company Parking Committee to use town properties surrounding the Durham Firehouse to park cars for the 2020 Durham Fair. Proceeds, um, to be used towards the length of service program.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number 10, I require, I'd like to make a motion to give permission for the Durham Volunteer Fire Department to dispose of one portable generator homemade for disposal of surplus property policy under, and this is a change, um, the bid option. We got a, um, email from the Assistant Chief, um, that they have since, um, changed their mind. They don't want to scrap it. They want to first try to auction it off.
Hasn't been put in service for many years, first put in service in 1947.
Yeah.
It still starts.
That's, is there a second?
Okay, so say that again. They're changing it from the scrap option to the-
To the, um, public auction, uh, option.
Right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number 11. Make a motion to give permission for the First Selectmen to enter into a land use agreement with Yankee Gas Services doing business as EverSource Energy for the installation and maintenance of an impressed current cathodic protection rectifier, round bed, anodes, wires, and other occurrences on town owned property. Assessor map number 48 lot 7, expiring December 31st, 2030. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, this is for, um, this is, the property is on Wallingford Road near the, um, town skating pond. It was approved by Inland Wetlands last May. This is, um, grounding equipment for the gas main. This license agreement is standard license agreement, um, that other towns have used. The insurance requirements meet our, um, needs. And it looks like it's going to be a, if you looked at the pictures that, that were put in your packet, it's, it's pole mounted, but there will be underground wires too. Any further discussion?
Well, they might want to look this over again. They being overlooked this document. It's saying located at the southern side of Maple Avenue, in front, the C is Route 68. It is not anywhere near Maple Avenue. It's actually on the southern side of Route 68. They're talking about now s- map 48 block 7.
Yes.
That's White's Farm on Maple Avenue. They're actually talking about the skating pond, so they were right in the first place. They should be on map 37. So I've got map 37 and 48 here, so I think there's a wrong church in Pew.
I thought we looked at that. We definitely looked at it.
Well, there's 48 and there's Maple Avenue and there's White's and that's lot 7.
It's a hundred and 10 acre parcel.
That wraps, it wraps around?
It goes around multiple maps and so it gets assigned to one map. And in this case, it's assigned to map 48 and it goes on into map 37, but-
So even the loca- even the location is on map 37, which is where the skating pond is located. They're referencing-
It's referencing a single parcel.
The old, yes.
And that parcel has a single map reference to it.
No, I still say the description of 1.5 acres, which is located on the southern side of Maple Avenue is incorrect regardless of the map. But 1.5 acres, I think you're talking about going around the skating pond, which is on the southern side of Wallingford Road. If you go to the southern side of Maple Avenue, you're in the town hall.
So the, the license is exercised only o- over a portion of the license, our land. Approximately 1.5 acres, but the entire parcel is 109.46 acres.
Right, I understand that. But he's referencing the license shall be exercised only over a portion of licenser's land, a 1.5 acre plus or minus.
Right.
Located at the southern side of Maple Avenue. I don't think the 1.5 acres that they're designating are regardless of what map you're on or 109 acres. You're referencing 1.5 acres of land within the lot.
Change that to Wallingford Road.
So the Route 68 is more important than the Maple Avenue. But I guess in general, I'm trying to figure out what the heck they're doing here. So they're wrapping, it looks like part of the skating pond?
No, they're pole mounting some equipment. Um, I didn't print out the pictures.
Well, if I, if I see an I C C P process, there's poles, there's a silt fence. And what you're doing is you're basically taking the metallic component of a gas pipeline and you're trying to keep it from rusting through this process. So you're, you're doing a chemistry experiment. So is it underground equipment? That I think there is, because if I'm looking at this right, it's looking at a silt fence. So there's a ground view and then above the ground view, you have underground-
Oh yeah, good, right there.
Underground equipment. So it's above and underground.
Yep.
Somewhere around the skating pond.
Coming off the road.
In the wetlands.
It was reviewed by Wetland and it, well-
So the only visible equipment that we're going to see is the cathodic periodic rectifier.
Yep.
Typical.
Just what is shown in that picture.
So the equipment and it's all going to something underground, which is not leaching anything into our water supply, public water supply?
I wouldn't think so.
High silicon, iron tubular in, in. So they're going to dig up outside the skating pond and in?
Outside, not inside.
Will the pond still be usable, if it will be usable?
Yes.
So for the consideration of zero dollars, we're allowing a for-profit corporation to use one and a half acres of our land? Why?
To provide safe utilities to our residents.
But again, they're a for-profit corporation.
Well, once, once all this equip, uh, once all this equipment is in, it goes on our, all those pipes will go on our grant list. This particular box, I don't know about that.
All right, so there's no environmental issues, there's no land use issues from at least Inland Wetlands. Did Conservation Commission take a look at it? Does it make sense that they do since they're responsible for the oversight of the properties?
We can. I could guess the outcome.
I'm, I'm not sure I could. I mean, is that, like, they're okay with it?
I mean, if Inland Wetlands, you know, didn't think that it was a problem.
I mean, if it wouldn't be a big-
I mean, there's electric, there's utilities at that site now. I don't see that Conservation is going to consider it an intensifying of that use.
Hopefully it wouldn't, but there's going to actually be some kind of construction, digging of holes, putting in tanks, connecting all with a wire, putting it to a telephone pole. I mean, if, as long as there's a plan and they know that it's not going to disrupt the public use, I don't think it hurts to ask them if the, the overseers of the town conservation properties, that they're on board with that. So I would request their, um, review and just to make sure that they are-
Would you entertain a, an amendment to my motion that says pending their approval?
Yes, please.
All those in favor say aye.
Of the amended motion.
Of, oh, of the amendment to the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, fiscal analysis ending December 31st, 2019. Revenues at the close of December, we are six months through our fiscal year. Revenues are at 62.3%, which is broken down as follows. 68.1% of tax revenue, 42.4% of other local revenue, 44.4% of state revenue, 27.5% of E C S revenue. State revenue expected in the first quarter was down, but it picked up in the second quarter. Revenue was received for the municipal stabilization grant, LOCEP and E C S. We should see an increase in the education cost sharing line late January. Revenue is expected to be received in three payments, October, January, and April. Expenditures, budgetary expenditures are at an overall 57.2% spent at this time. Planning and zoning and inland wetland legal budget lines are over budget for a total of $6,311 due to ongoing litigation. The snow and ice removal budget prior to last weekend's storm is at 34.5% expended. Undesignated fund balance has been used once to date at a total expenditure of $100,500. A transfer was made to the emergency medical services budget for expenses related to staffing. This budget is currently 57.6% used. The majority of expense is for VIN tech staffing for the months of September, October, November, and December. That totals $60,733. The contingency fund has not been used to date and remains at $109,000. So, um, if you want to see more information in this, um, report, please email that information to the Finance Director and, and me and we will, um, incorporate it in next month's.
And again, her update, her updates are based on December 31.
Right. We're not done with this month yet.
Right, but when she says last week's storm, she, she was talking about something that happened in December.
Yes. Okay. Um, local traffic authority. Um, John Jenkins, Puma Works is here. At a previous Board of Selectmen meeting, we voted to install temporary no parking signs on the eastern side of Birchmo on the western side. And we then voted to make it permanent. It is becoming increasingly, um, problematic to allow parking on the eastern side. It's making it difficult to plow, um, and quite honestly, um, it's, it's still, um, narrowing the road enough that it's becoming a safety concern. So the recommendation or the request is to install temporary no parking signs. So Johnny, why did you request temporary at this point?
I wouldn't request temporary anymore, permanent.
You are?
Besides the road.
Okay.
It's impossible to get through there even without the plower.
Yeah. Yep. Discussion, thoughts?
I concur.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 And so we took out the word temporary and we put permanent.
Permanent, right. Okay, um, last, well, over the past several years, um, the town of Durham has participated in a, um, State of Connecticut Horizontal Curve Project that, um, went as follows. The town sent in a map of our town roads and, um, identified ones that are particularly curvy. State, uh, D O T went out to bid and hired an engineering firm that came out and, um, inspected the roads and chose the roads that they thought warranted this, um, application. And that is, um, Chevron's, um, and, and other road signage. It was installed. It was a, a very lengthy process because all 169 towns were involved to some degree. And, um, after it was installed, there were mixed reviews. Some people loved it, especially on the dark roads because the signs were ultra reflective and, um, really helped guide motorists in the appropriate way. And others didn't like it, particularly on two streets with abutting, um, neighbors. We couldn't respond to those, um, requests to remove them until those signs became our property. So they had to be inspected and D O T had to formally, um, So they had to be inspected and DOT had to formally, um, complete the project. And, and that's, at that point, the signs became ours. So now we are at a point where we can, because we own the signs, vote to remove them. But I think we need to talk about consequences to that.
I'm reading these letters, right? They are asking for removal and replacement of smaller Chevrons on some of the locations, Johnny, is that doable?
To be honest with you, in response to any letters out there, and I have not read any of them, I would leave everything in place, it was all engineered. By making any change, you're taking on the liability that you were worried about that you discussed earlier.
I'd, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Andrews, he's, um, here and for George, your edification, John met him before, but we'd like to give you an opportunity to re- respond to some of the things you've put in your letter.
Well, if he hasn't read the letter back there, he's had the letter for at least the year nine months or more.
Yeah.
If he doesn't matter for this or-
Johnny doesn't, no.
Oh, I don't know, I just-
No, this is the local traffic authority.
Okay, I agree, again, I think the local traffic authority was just brought up because I came in here with this problem. That's you and-
That's correct.
I've got thirteen foot tall Chevron signs, eight of them, I see them from every window of my house. These signs belong on exit ramps and entry ramps, they're ninety-five, which I travel every day, all day long. I got pictures, I stand next to these things, I live half a mile, there's forty-six signs in a half a mile of a little curvy road, which is ninety-one Old Blue Hill's road. I look out my window, I think I live, I don't live in the same house anymore, I live on an exit ramp. These ramps or these signs or Chevrons, whatever you call them, okay, yeah, they might help people go around a corner. There's curves, you have headlights, the speed limit's fifteen miles an hour.
The speed limit's twenty, twenty, I don't know if we have an approved speed limit for-
Hey, you got the curvy signs is fifteen, going down the hill is fifteen, whatever it is, it's twenty-five, you've been at twenty-five. I mean, this, you can see straight through the, through the liners, no trees, I keep the property clear, you can see through both sides just so, so I can leave my driveway and see if the neighbors can do the same. These things are just, I mean, I came and take a picture of the Christmas tree with the kid and there's a friggin' sign I see out there, excuse my language. It's, it's, I've been very calm because you don't own the signs. I've talked to people in other towns where these signs are just gonna get all, half of them are probably gonna get ripped out. Um, you could probably talk to other selectmen in other towns and see how they're gonna do this. I moved, I picked this house because I lived in the country, now I live on an exit ramp. It's, I keep this window closed, this window closed, this blind closed, this blind closed, I gotta leave the front window open. I sit on my breezeway, I sit on my garage, if I'm in the back in the pool, I see, that's all I see is these signs. I, I, um, I, I brought a picture last time, my boy, forgot, I forgot to send you another thing. But these, these are the signs that are outside my front of my house. I mean, does that belong on a little skinny country road, heated those suckers? I have nine hundred feet of frontage and that's what I see. And there's curves, there's no, and I think these signs actually make people go faster around these corners. Your, your, it, it's like a fun zone or something, it's just a, and again, I didn't move here to have city, these signs, state signs, I know it's a state program, she says they're not state signs or Chevron. Where do you think these things came from? Right now, there's no leaves on the trees, cars come flying by trucks or whatever, these things, you know, they got lights to them, they ricochet in the windows, my front lights in my house light up these things, my landscaping lights, it's, it's just terrible. I, I, I literally, I wanted to rip them out. But again, I know those legal ramifications of doing something like this, so again, I, I'm here to, you know, we gotta remove these things. My, my value of property's gotta be less looking at these suckers. I'm paying taxes, you're not gonna lower my taxes because I live on an exit ramp. It's, and I know you say you like them because you drive up there. Again, you got curves, at night you got headlights, I just, I just don't get it, I don't get it. I mean, what, what do we do? I mean, do you have these in front of your house? Would you like to see these things? Would you like your house moved onto an exit ramp? I mean, that's exactly what it looks like. I got videotape, I got pictures of exit ramps that look even better than what's there. They also stuck one, um, like the underground utilities from across the street, there's a sign which they got, whoever put it in didn't get nailed, they gotta be, they gotta be right next to the line. I've had it, uh, whatever, call me before you dig many times, and it was never done.
We did have the engineers come out and check that and-
Yeah, but there's no lines on the road, you can't GPS that, I know you said that they GPS some of this stuff, there, there's no way.
They called before you did.
No, they did not, no, there are no lines, no nothing, I've done it several times because of septic systems and lights or whatever, landscaping. And that was never done, never done. I mean, I didn't even know these signs were going up. Then they come back and they put in another one because they missed one. I mean, it's just-
So, um, have you had a chance to, to go out there?
I have not, but I would like to.
You must have driven around town, you see these things everywhere, not the only spot.
And I, I mean, the state-
It's like clownville, but I don't think it was in front of my house.
The state is noted for overkill.
Oh, yeah.
If, if one will do, let's put up three because-
Oh, they put a beep.
So, I would love to take a look at it, I'd love to table this item and take a drive-through and see, there's gotta be a compromise.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna give you a chance to, yeah, no. So this is just one road, we have Co Road, um, also, um, but-
I see Old Blue Hill is a stagecoach.
Stagecoach, sorry. So, the state that you say is overkilling this, it's based on the MUTCD, the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. That has been adopted by the State of Connecticut, it's a federal, um, guidance document. And it, um, it's been our guiding principle, so-
It spells out the height that they're installed, the size of the sign, the location of the sign.
The manual, I sent you the link to it, but we have a printed thing that's this fat. And it, and it also says what curves are warranted for this kind of application, so I would ask you to review that too. So in terms of, um, stagecoach, you'd like to speak to that?
Hi, my name's Durham, I live on Stagecoach Road. I encountered what he encountered one day coming home from work and I was like, what on earth? And I get on I-91 to go to Tredmill Town every day to go to work and I was like, oh, am I getting on the highway? Again, you move to the country and I get, it's supposed to have signs, but I have like the before and the after. There was, if you come onto Stagecoach from the southbound side over there, the thing, as soon as you head down, you're heading straight towards the blue trail, so you know you have to go left. There were small Chevrons, you know, going around the corner. So then you have another straightaway, which you go right by my house. And as you pull up to my house, there's two huge, ten feet tall Chevrons, huge, like this, in between my and my neighbor's driveway, between our driveways. Literally, they're only like three feet apart from each other. So when you're coming down my driveway, you look to the right, as soon as the sign's in your eyes, you cannot see the cars coming down the street. It's literally a blind spot. And so you keep going, and then if you hit the ice on my nice pilly driveway, you're going and the cars are still coming. So eventually I'm gonna crash. Nevertheless, there was appropriate smaller Chevrons before my yard, before my property, around the curve. Now the ones around the main curve are this big, and the ones around my yard are about the size of this wall. And it's just like, I'm not saying to remove it because they're there for a reason, but one between the two driveways, literally that there's my driveway, so they looked me. And two, they were before the property, which was more appropriate to show that the curve's coming. And, what a crazy thing, when they first put them up, not two days afterwards, a Bob's delivery truck was coming down the road, seeing the two Chevrons and turned into my neighbor's driveway instead, because it's that idiotic. So, you're welcome to come sit in my driveway and see what I'm talking about. And I'm not saying you have to get rid of them because of liability, just for the smaller ones, I'm gonna remember where they were. I know exactly where they were, I have signs of before and after. But like when you come home, like you said, not on I-91. It's the only people that go on the road are the ones that live there.
Well, she, she claimed that every road in town was, because it was a cut through. This whole town, every road in this town was a cut through to another town. You can't, uh, again, that's no reason to throw up these giant signs. And she's talking, I think she's talking about those big, huge arrows.
Oh, my-
I have some of those on my road and you'll know because you've got friends up there. That first big one that you see, there's no such corner when you turn it. When you're coming, when you're going towards seventy-nine, you wanna talk about if I can go over this whole town with all the signs if you want. But that one there, that's all that does is bring people head on to you when you're, you're coming, you gotta watch for these things. So who's gonna be responsible for that, if me, my family or somebody? Again, you guys are throwing these signs, you had no idea what they were doing to town, you had the guy come out, he comes out at three o'clock, he says there's no way the lights could project and ricochet off of anything. He came at three o'clock in the afternoon, I got his name, the engineers, I mean, we're at least a new home.
Yeah, we did have the engineers come out to address some of these, to kind of explain to see if there was any way to-
A corner that it is, before the property on the side, it was down years ago, of course, town didn't care, nobody ever came to put that.
You got, you got Main Road heading up to the Time Out Tavern, you have a little tiny Chevron like this telling you there's a curve, you know what I mean?
That program, that, just so you know, that program was for local roads.
Yeah.
So that doesn't mean that the state did it on their roads.
No, there's less, there's less, there, it, from, from Route seventy-nine all the way to the shore, there's less signs than in my half a mile drive. I mean, it's just, it's incredible, I, I would have invested in the sign company for just for one town and it could have been, it's just, it would, it's like surplus signs, this company that made all these signs, so where are they gonna go? They're never gonna sell another sign again, there's more signs in the town of Durham than-
There's no way it's not affecting the, the value of your property.
Oh, but it, it's got to because it looks terrible, it looks terrible.
Okay.
I mean, there's houses that, you know, right in front of my house, boom, they're calling on my house, I can't look without seeing a sign, I go, oh, my leave. It's like, where am I?
So, welcome to the board.
I, well-
I just thought there'd be more-
We wish we could have done this, you know, prior to now, but I would like you to be-
I'd be more than happy to look at them, I'm more than happy to read the regs, I mean, again, if it-
He wasn't on the board a month ago.
Yeah.
If the state, if a state engineer-
You guys, you guys know exactly, nobody, you go by them, you don't have to see them, you know what I'm talking about.
I was out, I was out there with the engineer, so very familiar.
Never, I've been there for fifteen years, nobody's even jumped a curb, you got curves for braces.
Right, but it's only fair to George because he is part of this local traffic authority.
Okay, no, I understand, yeah.
So, we'll keep it on the agenda for the next meeting and we will take a vote at the next meeting.
Okay, I'm gonna wait for that before I do my on the map of signs and sign inclusion and all nine yards and social media because you could tell I'm very upset about it. I thought by now something would have, you would even thought what you were gonna do, okay, we're gonna take that one, we're gonna put the corner sign back.
What we would like to do is make you happy, and make you happy, and also follow state regulations and make all traffic authorities happy.
But is this the state road or is it a town road?
It's a town road, but if there's a liability, we have to be careful, but here's, I mean, here's the caveat, just-
Yeah, I'm just excited and I'm gonna talk over you.
What, what we need to do, just like with any legal opinion, we're open to interpretation. So if you had an overzealous state engineer came out and said, you know, instead of one, let's put six, I mean, there's a second opinion somewhere to say, hey buddy, do we need this many? So to protect our liability, to me, you go back to an engineer, state engineer, someone with traffic authority and say, this is what Bobby did. Do you have, will we still cover our butts?
I mean, these roads have been there for a hundred, I can't even say, maybe fifty, sixty years, there are problems.
It sounds like we, it sounds like we opened Pandora's box somewhere.
Where there's no, where there's no, there's no houses or property, you go from the right between two people's driveways.
It sounds like we invited this group in to come and, and give a review and this is what they said you need to do, and now if we don't follow that opinion, we just shot ourselves in the foot, is that fair to say? Or did they just come into Durham on their own accord and start putting signs on?
No, 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 we, we invited them and in fact, we are the recipient of thousands and thousands of dollars of signs. Application of road signage that we should be cut, we should have been contemplating.
But did you ever think the town would look like this with all these signs? You complain you don't like the ones on Main Street, the big ones for crosswalks, but yet you throw them all back. And that's what you brought the last time, you said you didn't like what they did to the historical town, Main Street, like the state did by putting up those crosswalks, I guess you said it looked terrible.
Well, I say, I said, no, I think I brought it up as an example that it doesn't look good, but certainly there's application. We need to make our crosswalks, you know, safe, so-
But then there's other common sense things, we'll go through signs in towns again. I'll pull up to a stop sign that says there's a stop sign ten feet in front of me, what sense does that even make and how confusing is that? Do people not know how to drive, that you have to aim them or do you have to? I, I don't get it, I really don't get it.
I know it's perplexing to you, but there is a science behind traffic engineering, there really is, there's a whole body of science.
That looks nice, you can see the landscaping behind it and they're throwing this here, so, so my, my view is, well, why don't we take my property taxes? I think they're worth probably half of what they are now. I don't have a view of woods anymore or other houses or, or anything, that's what I see. That, that, that's disgusting, it really is.
Thank you, John. More to come at the next meeting.
It's not what you want, you could appeal your taxes to the Board of Assessment.
Oh, I re, I re, went down to talk about it.
But that's not what you want, you don't wanna do that.
To get an answer before I, I'm trying to be calm before the storm, I'm trying to do this an easy way. Signs have value, I mean, I have actually stopped neighbors from ripping these things out because I know you're gonna come to me because I'm the one complaining. I mean, neighbors across the street, they, it, it, it's just, it's just a nightmare, it's just terrible looking, I can't, I don't know what to say. You can see it right there, that's, that's one out of eight that I look at every time I look out any window on my back property, I'm high shaved. It, it, it's just, it's terrible.
Just know that's, if this board votes against it, just know that is an option.
Oh, there's lots of options, oh, yeah.
Well, it's one, there's probably ten, but-
But I mean, am I gonna spend the rest of my life fighting for these signs? I mean, I got more important things to do, but this is not right, this is not right. I, I, you know, if bigger fish than pride, this is not, I won't let this one go.
If the state were infallible, there wouldn't be a Route nine through Middletown with all the stoplights. And there wouldn't be a hard way to get on Route nine where you stop, go forward and stop again.
Yeah, that's a terrible accident sign and there's, I've been there, I've been hit by there, I know exactly what you're talking about then again.
Alright, thank you. Alright, item number fourteen, discussion on RSD thirteen offer letter dated December twelfth, twenty nineteen regarding corn school. George, you have offered to do some research on that and that's gonna happen on Thursday, correct? So we'll keep this on the agenda for further discussion. Item number four, I'd like to make a motion to give approval of the date, time, location and call to a special time meeting for the following items. To transfer two hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars from Public Works Vehicle Reserve to CIP Public Works Vehicles for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-one Freightliner fourteen S, one fourteen SD and twenty-twenty Ford F-150 as recommended by the Board of Finance at their January twenty-first, twenty twenty meeting. Number two, to transfer thirty thousand dollars from contingency to Tree Warden Professional Tree Services for the removal of hazardous trees as recommended by the Board of Finance at their January twenty-first, twenty twenty meeting. And three, to transfer one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from Reserve for Revow to CIP Assessor for Revow Services and Kama Software Upgrade as recommended by the Board of Finance at their January twenty-one, twenty twenty meeting. Is there a second? So, we did discuss, um, setting town meetings a little bit earlier, but this proposed date is the same night as our Board of Selectmen meeting. Other boards have requested that we try to fit town meetings on the same night to be efficient with all of our schedules. So, this makes sense, right? All those in favor say aye?
Before we do it, just under discussion, what type of revow are we going through this year?
This is a full revow. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Item number sixteen, like to make a motion, um, to approve the minutes of the January thirteen budget workshop.
Second that.
Any discussion? Addition, deletion, correction? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Uh, make a motion to approve the January thirteen regular meeting minutes?
I'll second it, but I do have corrections.
Okay, go. Page number? Page number?
Five of eight. I think it's the first one.
Paragraph?
Charter revision discussion, last sentence. I'm pretty sure you agreed that you put it out for a year, and not till the next joint board commission meeting, and marked.
That is correct.
Item number 17, page six, motion by Laura Francis, second by four teams to accept a RAC's refund, wants to be taxed.
What, what number?
It's, it's item number 17, on page six.
Oh, yeah, typo, okay.
But I would also like to include the list, very short list, we've done it in the past, put it right in the minutes, you know, who gets the refund. And finally, on page eight, the volunteer influence has been having the meetings at private business, not home. Those corrections I would...
Okay, motion to approve as corrected.
I'll make one motion here, the one change, number 22. Public comments. Second paragraph. Either after the second sentence. I did respond that I believe all individuals should have the opportunity to serve. I know that, it says here, Mr. Shubert was the driving force behind putting an unqualified elector on the ballot for the Board of Finance. I believe I responded, and I can talk more about that during selectmen comments, but I did. And I maintain my position that I believe any person over 18, I will not discriminate if someone owns property or doesn't own property. They should be allowed to run for office in our town, and I maintain that position, so I think that should get put in there. I did speak about, I did respond to Mr., Mr. French, I think, brought it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor, minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Old and new business, we're having sexual, preventing sexual harassment training here on Wednesday. Two sessions, one 10 to 12, and one, one to three. We, the law was expanded, requiring more personnel to have that training. You can do it online, or you can do it in person. And we did get clarification of who is subjected to that new statute, and that does include the two of you. So if you have training...
Under what directive?
State statute, I can get you the...
As employees?
As employees and volunteers, we did get a legal opinion. Yep. So you can do it online.
Anybody who's remotely paid by the town, he said this...
So if I refuse the salary, am I remotely paid, since I'm not salaried? I refuse the salary.
I was trying to listen to one. I mean, he did tell us volunteers, like Lou is going, Robbie's going. I guess I could ask.
Criteria includes volunteer.
I mean, there's, he could do it online, you gotta ask, you gotta answer.
John, if you did it through your employment, we just need your certificate.
All right, I'll, I'll, I think it's a great idea, I think everybody should do it every year, more than one time a year, so I have no problem. You didn't, I don't have that in my packet, the old and new business, so...
It was part of that pile that I gave you.
It's what?
It's part of the pile that I gave you.
An email, Jack, I'll just stop that.
It was, it was in there, but I don't have it here.
It was when I handed you...
Whatever it is, I need, is what are the dates again, because I don't have that.
It's Wednesday.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday, and what are the times?
10 to 12, or 1 to 3.
All right, well, I cannot, obviously during the day, but you said I can do it online?
You can do it online, but if you've already fulfilled that for your daytime employment, you can take that certificate. You don't have to do it again, if you've already done it through Hartford PD.
Yep.
I met with the Sustainable CT Equity Coach with RSD 13 and Middlefield, and we're working on some local community events that can further the equity inclusion and inclusion conversation. The EDC meeting with CERC will be February 12th, that's the regularly scheduled EDC meeting. And at that point in time, we can discuss the, the activities going forward with CERC. I wanna know if you guys plan to attend that, I know there's a lot of interest. So if you are, I'm gonna need to notice it as a joint meeting with the Board of Selectment. So if, if that date, if you want to attend, and it's not a date you can make, please send me some dates and we'll figure that out. But I know it's an important topic.
The time?
Seven o'clock. Yep. I met with the president of the Camp Farnham House Board and the executive director, with one of our residents, Mike Doyle, who used to be on the board of the Camp Farnham House. You may or may not know that last year the camp did not open. And it was disappointing to us, because we had set up a nice relationship with them, whereby they allowed our ref department to have some night events there for, you know, outdoor swim and teen events. It's a beautiful asset, and we wanted to get the status as to what their challenges are, why they didn't open, et cetera, et cetera. Nothing was, was decided at that meeting, they did say that clearly their challenges are financial. But it's also a little bit of governance as well. And they are looking to possibly rearrange their board structure, so that perhaps there will be a governing board just for the camp, aside from the neighborhood house. There was some conflict, competition for resources between the two. And the thought is, perhaps if they split out the governance, they'll be able to seek some solutions for the camp and make it viable again. But it's important to the town, you know, it's a beautiful resource, it's being underutilized. And quite honestly, now that nobody, they're not using it, it's getting in some serious disrepair.
So they're still up near, going forward?
Yeah. So more to come on that. There will be a public informational meeting for the Water Main Construction Project, March 24th, seven o'clock, at the Durham Library. Communication will be sent out as it gets closer. Cogginchad Little League is looking to apply for a grant to replace the 25-year-old fence at the, at the Little League field, the center one. So they're looking for a letter of support, so unless there's an objection, I will provide one. It's just replacing like-for-like, no changes.
Because it's town property.
Because it's town property.
I don't have a problem with that.
As you might have read and heard in the news, this is the 100th anniversary of the women's suffrage movement. And the Secretary of State with the Lieutenant Governor has set up a statewide committee to organize some events to commemorate the anniversary. And they've asked for local localities to have some events as well. So I sent a letter to our female elected officials and asked if there were any interests, was any interest in getting together and proposing some activities. Christine Micho from the library is dedicating some members of her staff to help do some research, see if we can find some, maybe some local history that shows that we were involved. And it could be one event, it could be a series of events, but I thought it is worthy of some attention. I attended the DEEP webinar entitled Preventing, Reducing Food Waste and Recovering Food for People on an ongoing education series from DEEP, to try to divert some organic material from our municipal solid waste stream. Attended the Durham Republican Town Committee Caucus, I made food for the blood drive. I briefly attended office hours with Representatives Candelora and Kokaruta, they had office hours at Dunkin' Donuts. And I gotta say, there was a lot of people there. You, what, you go? Yeah. I went also to the Exchange Club meeting, went to the CCM Board meeting, the Durham Middlefield Division of Middlesex County Chamber of Commerce, a RiverCog meeting, Sustainable CT Board Directors meeting, the Regional Collaboration meeting at Department of Public Safety. And I met with the newly appointed aide for Senator Murphy's office, Lillian McKenzie. Any other old or new business? Selectmen comments. Public comments.
I have a couple, but just, just quickly, I was wondering when you were going to fill the vacancy on the Board of Finance?
I did not have a recommendation from the Republican Town Committee. Which is why I didn't have anybody today.
Are we under the clock there? Don't we have 30 days to fill the vacancy?
It does say that.
Is there a plan, I mean, it's tough to get a quorum, as I remember as it is.
Uh huh.
So is there a plan when Republican Town Committee will remember an invitation?
Did anybody volunteer? We're still looking.
John?
A couple issues, one, there was a comment about an unqualified elector. I guess our charter, you could get the exact word you have in front of you, about you need to be a taxpayer to the town to serve on the Board of Finance. I was kinda dismayed that somebody brought up that somebody should not be serving, who was duly elected. It's my position, I hope the position of this board, that, you know, I'm not gonna disqualify somebody from serving who may not own a home, they may rent here. They should still be able to serve on the Board of Finance, not everybody has a vehicle. You could have somebody renting, somebody who doesn't drive, for whatever reason. And I don't think they should be disqualified, a lot of people pay taxes other ways, they pay it through their rent. They pay to a parent who pays their car taxes, if they're younger maybe. People are also paying taxes to stores in town. So I will be taking a very broad approach, because I think any person over 18 years of age should be able to serve on a border commission, run for a border commission. So I was a little dismayed last week, or two weeks ago, when someone brought that up. I just, my interpretation of our charter is that, again, I will take a broad approach. I think we should be as open and make it as accessible for anybody to run, who so deserves to, who wants to serve. I mean, we just talked five seconds ago, we can't find it, it's hard to find people, and here we're gonna talk about disqualifying people. To me, that, that was just absurd, so that is my interpretation of the charter. I hope the two of you interpret it the same way, if that should come up. And maybe we, if we do charter revision, a year, two years down the road, we clarify that, maybe a little bit. Because there is some...
So it's a moot point right now, because the timeframe to challenge that has passed, and that's statutory, that has nothing to do with the charter.
I would hope no one would challenge that.
The timeframe has gone by, so there will be no challenge. But if and when we do charter revision, I would recommend that that provision be removed, for all the reasons you mentioned. But it does say, that's what it says now.
The eligibility for...
For Board of Finance, taxpayer to the town, but again, people pay taxes other, other ways, to the town. You know, I'm not gonna disqualify a renter, that's built into their price of rent. So again, I just think it's a little foolhardy for individuals to say that they're unqualified electors. Let's see, I, I don't know if we do this, but I think it might be a good idea, because there are some issues, and I don't wanna specifically hit on to rehash it, but maybe the, the thing that's signed for ethics, maybe we send that out after every election. Or at least, do we know, are people signing that every time they're elected?
Yeah.
Because I believe, I talked with Alicia, she said some people had not, or there's one person had not. But I just think we need to make sure we stay on top of that, and make sure every person is signing that. Because again, depending how you interpret it, there may or may not have been elapsed there, maybe completely by accident. But again, I think we need to certainly send that out, and I would be, I wouldn't be opposed to doing it every, there's no reason you can't sign it every time you're reelected.
We did, we were just reelected, and we had it in our...
Okay, well, some people haven't signed it, that's all. And so I, I think that's important, that everybody sign those, and again, done every time. So that's important, and I think we've gotta stay on top of that. As far as the thing that was discussed earlier, and again, this can be a discussion, but we might wanna look, you know, are there Board of Finance meetings going on right now that could get challenged down the road? Because of actions of not doing something within the charter. And that's what scares me coming into budget season, is are we going to be taking action, is that board taking actions that could be challenged later on? So again, this may be a legal question, if you'd like, and you brought up somebody taking the lead, I could take the lead on this, George, if you'd like. But I think we need to get some clarification on some of this, on, because obviously, they appointed a chairman after the 10-day period, which is prescribed in the charter. So again, I don't know how we wanna proceed with that, I brought it up last time, we didn't ask for a legal opinion, but...
There was clearly desire to get counsel on the question of whether or not that action was legal. Because there were certainly allegations that it was illegal.
It wasn't, it was a fact that it took place after 10 days.
That is a fact.
Yes, okay, so that's not an allegation.
But the allegation was that because it didn't take place, it was illegal.
But we don't, we don't know that.
So I did get guidance from our town council.
Without the Board of Selectment approval.
And I don't need your approval.
We, we has already established earlier in this meeting that you do.
We did not establish that.
And maybe, I, I, then we should have kept that conversation going longer.
There is an opinion here.
I was starting to move on from.
That it was not an illegal action.
But that is one person's opinion, right? Hey, you went out and got, correct?
I went out to our town council, I didn't go out to my friend, I didn't go out to my buddy, I went out to our town council that has been duly appointed.
And it doesn't address, if it was deemed illegal, what would be the recourse? Doesn't address that, which is one...
Nor does the charter, and nor does the statute.
And that's, and that's an issue, so this might be something we need to look into. I don't wanna go through a budget season and then somebody challenge everything the Board of Finance has done, because they made a error by not having a meeting within 10 days. It's not a big deal, I'm sure it wasn't done on purpose, or there was a weather issue or whatnot, but I think it's incumbent that we get it right.
Can I make the suggestion?
Yeah.
If you feel there was a conflict of interest from the town council, and you can express that, then I would be agreeable for you to get a second... express that, then I would be agreeable for you to get a secondary opinion, but if you can't, what I would suggest is that maybe your reservations would be satisfied by talking directly to council, the council that Laura used, or another one within the office that might not know the issue, and simply asking the back and forth, again, if this, then that, what if?
I think it's probably better at this point to go get other council, and look at, look at it that way, that would be by...
But if you're gonna chase down someone that you know is gonna give you...
I'm not trying to chase down anything, but I'm afraid that may have already happened.
I know, but you have to be...
It's the issue.
You have to be protected from them on the exact same...
Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait.
I get that, completely. So we have to be...
I asked a question of our town council.
But she didn't even ask the question that I brought up.
I asked the question whether the action that was taken by the Board of Finance was legal. I asked a question, I asked for an answer to that question. I did not give the attorney the conclusion that I wanted.
For one, you did it without Board of Selectmen approval.
I don't need your approval.
I think you do, I think the charter clearly says you do.
I don't.
Okay, do we go back to that?
If, well, again, as a conclusion, if you would like something, and you're requesting to the Board of Selectmen, and you want to feel like this was done properly, you have a conflict of interest issue at hand, if it's not with council, the problem is if you pick another council, then we could accuse you...
Completely agree.
We can accuse you of the same thing that you're potentially accusing someone else of.
Completely agree, the point is, somebody went out arbitrarily and went and got a legal opinion, we didn't agree.
It wasn't arbitrary at all time.
We didn't agree to that.
Would you feel better if you talked to council?
I will talk to him over the next two weeks.
And what's your question?
Okay.
And what's your question?
What if this is incorrect and someone challenges it? This is a legal opinion. My, my issue isn't who they picked for chairman, my issue is what's gonna occur later on if someone challenges that? Do we have all these Board of Finance meetings that are now improper? And we're going through the budget season?
I have a legal opinion that's, that's based on case law, that says that it was proper, so who's gonna challenge it?
Again, it is, it is one opinion that, again, we have to make a decision on.
Who is going to challenge it?
Because you, like Georgia said, there could be another person who gives exactly opposite opinion. You went out arbitrarily and got an opinion that we did not agree to go get.
It wasn't arbitrary at all.
Well, it was, no one, we didn't do a vote to go out and, did we?
I would strongly suggest you use the town council, not a second council, but town council...
I will talk, I will talk to him.
Who should be independent and should be...
But back to the bigger point, are we going to make a decision for this or going forward, who talks to town council, or if any of us talk to town council?
My suggestion is right now, if you have an issue and you want it clarified, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I would say that I would vote to have you have the ability to talk to council on this issue to make sure that your concerns are addressed.
And I will do that. The issue is, we went forward, and I do not, I can check the minutes, but we did not, last meeting, this board did not decide to go get a legal opinion.
We did not, we did not decide, but Laura did it, and I would say that at that point, what she did isn't tainted, it is if you want to be...
But should she have gotten the opinion?
If you ask the question, my opinion would be that if it was your issue, as we discussed today, for the first time, going forward, maybe we do this differently, for the first time, if it was your issue, you brought it up, I would have said then, "Go ahead, John, you make sure you're satisfied."
And that's fine, but what happened two weeks ago? Why did an opinion go get, we did not vote to go...
Because we didn't have that discussion two weeks ago.
Well, we did, we had that discussion two weeks ago.
I beg to differ, it's right here in the minutes. Where's the minutes?
Military here.
That you just approved.
Yeah. I said the Board of Selectmen for guidance. And would like the Board of Selectmen to look into this, okay? There's nothing here about a vote taking place to go get a legal opinion.
We didn't.
I know we didn't, so I don't know where you're...
We didn't vote on it, but Laura, as chief executive officer of the town, can ask, someone brought up an issue, she wouldn't be doing her job if she didn't say, "I just wanna satisfy this," but if it doesn't satisfy you, I'd say, "Let's take it to the next level."
However, did you not just say earlier in the meeting, George, that you think it should be us deciding on it?
Yes, this meeting I said it, this meeting, not two weeks ago.
Yeah, but we did talk about it last, last time as well.
We did talk about it, we didn't have a process in place that we were all in agreement on.
It is clearly in the charter.
Tonight, we all agreed.
We agreed tonight.
That you're not gonna do this again?
That is, no, we did not agree, we did not agree to prohibit me from seeking counsel.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, Laura will look into it. If you have a specific issue that you wanna run shotgun with, you will, you just expressed the fact that you don't do that.
Okay, so I will talk to that individual, and I will report back in two weeks, but going forward, it is my, my interpretation that we have to agree that if there are new issue comes up, that we are going to go get legal counsel, Laura is not gonna arbitrarily go get legal counsel herself, unless it's an issue that's already in the works.
You are not going to limit me from carrying out my responsibilities as CEO of this town.
But does it not say the Board, does it not say the Board of Selectmen? And I agree with George, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's gonna be fine, but I don't think it should be, it says Board of Selectmen.
You're saying two things, John, you're saying ninety-nine percent of the time it's gonna be fine.
We're gonna be fine with you talking to them, we're gonna be fine with you talking...
Well, I am not coming to you for every single thing that I need to contact to help superintend the affairs of this town.
Then you're going against the charter.
I am not, I am not.
Yeah, it clearly says it in there.
I am not.
So you're gonna continue to break the charter?
I am not breaking the charter.
I mean, it says it, it says right there, Laura, I don't know what to tell you.
All right, what I think we agree upon is that going forward, if you have an issue, you're not prohibited to talk to council.
And neither are you.
The affairs of the town, we do have the issue to prosecute, defend, negotiate legal actions, so if we're in that level, yeah, we need to talk.
Yeah, we're not at that level.
So there's no one who's gonna settle a legal matter on her own, she, she's not gonna do that. And insofar as the requirement for town council, my request was, outside of land use boards, if someone comes forward and says, "I want an opinion from council," let's float it through the whole board and not an individual, but if we as a group say, "We should get an opinion from council," now, we initiated the request, now, we discuss it as a board, and it's like, your hot button, I would satisfy you by saying then you talk to them.
And that's fine.
And that's where I think we are.
But that's not what happened two weeks ago.
All right, well, we're, we're are where we are right now, I don't know if you're looking for punishment or what.
I'm not looking for any punishment, George, I'm looking to get it done right.
Well, that's going forward, this is the procedure that we agreed on as a board side, and I think it's, it works.
But make it very, very clear, I am not prevented from seeking counsel.
If it's on a topic we discussed, most of the time, I want you to take the lead on it.
Well, I would hope that...
And I've said that two weeks ago.
So let's, let's take the matter at hand.
But if a new issue comes up...
Let's take the matter at hand. You feel that that action was not properly conducted and therefore illegal?
No, it wasn't properly conducted, that has been, the ramifications of that we need to know.
Okay.
And that wasn't even addressed in here.
It was absolutely addressed in here.
Absolutely, it was not, did you read that?
Yes, of course I read it.
Then it wasn't, but it wasn't addressed.
It is addressed, it says very clearly that there is no statutory or charter remedy for not following.
Laura, you went out and got a legal opinion that you wanted, and that's the problem, that's a problem that we've had for a while.
I take very strong offense to that.
You take offense to a lot of things you've said over the last 12 years.
All right, okay, all right. So you can call Attorney Roberts and ask him clarification on this opinion.
In the future, do not contact legal, legal counsel without Board of Selectmen approval.
John, it's not happening.
Well, that's what the charter says.
Any other comment or question?
There is public comment, yes.
Just because of the nature of the circular arguments you made, I would suggest that the Board of Selectmen require him to, or must admit writing, anything he does would be contacted, but it's way circular, I can follow it.
So you want that every time, anybody on the Board of Selectmen? Anytime on the Board of Selectmen, it's gotta get put in writing to the rest of the board?
I want that this time.
For every time?
No.
Because you're not gonna do it one time for one person and not say it should be for everybody?
I'm in the public right now.
Yes.
I want it for this circular argument.
That's what you want, and we could do that, would you guys wanna do that for every time from now on?
It has a requirement.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Sitting here listening to this and going on and hearing people talk, I'm looking at this from a business perspective, and when we talk in business, in schools or wherever, in the outside world out there, I mean, what's the problem with the three of you? If one of you contacts the attorney, you CC everyone on this board? So if Laura contacts, or John or George contacts the attorney, they can see what it said, but they can also chime in on that email. And there's nothing wrong with CCing if you're talking through email, and not only should that happen, but the attorney should also be responding when it's CC to everyone, and respond to everybody in that, and not just to the first selectman. So I don't see a problem, and then they're all in the loop. If it's CCing, but little things can be CC, it doesn't take you too long to hit CC for any, all three of you on it, or to let everyone in the loop. So you're not coming here tonight to find out what happened.
Thank you. Karen?
The attorneys are not free, and when you give them different facts and circular arguments, my taxes are going to pay because you cannot sit down and clarify your thoughts and leave them out.
I agree with you completely, absolutely.
You need to specify what you want to say before you contact. As the chief executive is given the power to run the business, and running the town involves contacting the attorney for clarification of the charter. The, going to the attorney, I have grave doubts as an attorney, wanting to get comments from three different people, and they're all going to ask me different things, and you're going to double our attorney bills by having each one of you contact. I think one person sends out, if you feel that she did not lay out the information adequately, or did not follow to the question in the way she wanted it, what you want the answer, you deal with her, and you can have one person deal with the attorney. You cannot have three people contacting the attorney. You all have CC already, you're already given this information before you come here, the fact that you don't like the law and you wish the law was different? I'm sorry, the charter's the charter. You just finished telling me you wanna follow the charter, and then you say, "Oh, I don't like this rule about Board of Finance." I'm sorry, the Board of Finance wasn't taxpayers, I don't want somebody who's not paying taxes to come on Board of Finance and decide how they're going to pick, there's a lot of people, there's a reason people voted for that charter, and you can't just say, "I disagree with all the people who voted for that charter," okay? This is one of the reasons why you have one contact person who deals with the attorney. You deal with Laura, you work out between the two of you exactly what you want to say, what information you wanna know, okay? That's probably what he's trying to say, that's what I'm saying, I don't want to end up watching my attorney deals and my taxes go up because you can't handle the attorney.
Thank you for your input, I completely agree with you, attorney fees are out of control, and this is an example why.
You're asking, you're listening.
What? No, it's because of what occurred last week, went to the attorney without any approval. As far as your other issue, I am not, I am not going to be discriminatory and not allow a renter to, to, uh, serve.
It's not your decision, it's the charter.
Okay? And I said, "Ma'am, can you please not interrupt?" I certainly listened to you.
It's public.
I am, what?
It's public comment.
Yes, and I listened to her, and now I'm responding to her, because she talked, she said something. I will, I said I'm taking a broad approach to that, because people pay taxes numerous ways, and some of those ways are paying it into their rent, some of those ways are paying a family member who happens to pay, again...
You can do it, in the meantime, you can't, because you have to follow...
Well, I thank you for your opinion, but I disagree with you, I believe in openness and that we allow anybody to serve who should wanna run, if they're an adult, I'm not gonna discriminate against someone who maybe can't afford a house and rents, okay? And I find that very offensive that you would, for someone that doesn't have a car, I find that very offensive, ma'am, thank you.
Lauren?
I'm gonna try to limit myself to the most constructive points of that conversation. I'm, I would encourage the three of you to go home and reflect on the productivity of some of your exchanges, because you've had four years together, and I mean that in the most general spirit that I can. Secondly, it's my opinion, the given the discussion that we had about the election of the chairmanship of the Board of Finance, that it was completely reasonable for the first selectman to identify a potential legal situation and to contact the town's attorney. I believe that the Board of Selectmen does have overview, for instance, when you put in your budget and you put $30,000 for legal fees, that's, that's oversight, you're saying we shouldn't do that. For the first selectman to get a legal opinion based on an issue that was raised at a public meeting is completely reasonable and in fact prudent behavior, and that issue, that answer can now come back to you guys within two weeks, and now you have an answer, you know that situation is in fact resolved if you're willing to accept it. I would encourage you to not leave common sense at the door, as I've heard them saying watching me frequently this week, that if a meeting isn't, if, if an action is intended to take place in 10 days and it doesn't take place till the 11th day, what is the common sense remedy? You cannot make it the ninth day, do you hold a new vote, which would then be further from the 10 days? Do you revert to the previous chairman? Do you, what is a common sense approach? I would be, I have not read the legal opinion, my guess is somewhere couched in his four paragraphs is that simple idea, there's no way to fix this. It was a legal meeting, legal members had a legal vote, and they chose their chairman, and so they can vote on their chairman again in two years, and I hope we don't spend any more money confirming whether that makes sense or not. Thank you.
Joe, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I just, I just, I didn't about it, I think you did your job by requesting. If you didn't request that opinion, we'd be sitting here tonight, listening to somebody requesting to go get that opinion, and now we're gonna spend some more money, and we're, you guys discussed earlier, we're over budget, you can see...
We're not over budget in that line.
On what?
Not on town council, the planning and zoning and in the WETL budgets are...
But as a town, we're spending a lot of money on attorneys, and it seems like, you know, if it was some other issue, and you did the same thing six months ago, and the attorney gave an opinion, what would you guys do? You live with the opinion, you wouldn't be going out and finding another opinion to bounce off the opinion that you already got. I mean, you're spending our money, and it seems to me that there was some mistake made, and you got the answer to it, let's move on as a town, instead of wasting time and wasting energy, it just seems like a, such a petty thing to be wasting time on. As far as, John, your opinion and your interpretation of our town charter is pretty lame English, and your broad interpretation of it, as a taxpayer, I'll let you know that I do not want, which our charter does, I do not wanna see somebody on a board or commission that doesn't pay taxes in this town making decisions about how we spend our money. They may be a renter, they may be renting for a month, we're gonna put them on, and they're gone. The, the point, I think, of having people that are taxpayers and having that stipulation is because you've... is because you've got some ownership in the community, not somebody that's gonna be here for six months, maybe a few lucky a year, and, and move on. I was going to say that item number seven, while you were there, I thought it was very good productive discussion and I hope that you continue with that, uh, that discussion. I think it'll just be beneficial for the operation of your board and the operation of our community. I can hope we did it well. Item number 11 about the, uh, utilities. Is there, the area of the 1.5 acre that they're looking for, is that clearly identified on a map?
Yep.
Where they're gonna be.
I'll, I'll just say, I find that to be an elitist attitude. I'm sorry, I think people who are 18, 19 years old, maybe don't own property, they can still contribute to our community. Same thing with maybe somebody who rents, um, they could've lived here for many years. We have people who have lived in this town for many years and I'm not gonna preclude them from a border commission. They add value to our community as well. So I disagree with you. I thank you for your opinion, but I, I certainly disagree. Thank you.
Bob?
Yes, I had written a, a statement in reference to a bunch of different things that we're discussing tonight and I just wanted to make sure that, um, everyone is clear about the position of the Board of Finance and essentially where we're coming from. What I wanted to do is, um, first get the exact verbiage that was used at the meeting. And it said, "Selectperson John explained he read in the Board of Finance meeting minutes from December 19 of 2019 that there was an election of officers. He noted in the charter, Board of Finance is required to hold a reelection within 10 days following qualification of new elected members. He feels because Board of Finance held their election after 10 days, the chairman was picked illegally and would like the Board of Selectmen to look into this." So being that it was my first year as chair of this board and aware of the action that I needed to take in reference to the charter, specifically check, um, sorry, sections 5, 1, 1, it says qualifications. And under qualifications and meetings, it says, "The Board of Finance, within 10 days following qualification of newly elected officers, shall meet an elector's membership, a chairman, who is to preside over the meetings, a vice chairman who shall preside in the chairman's absence, and shall appoint a clerk, who shall prepare the minutes and other records for the meeting." It then indicates that each member of the Board of Finance has to meet the following qualifications, okay? First one is be an elector of the town. Number two, it says be a taxpayer of the town. Number three, it says be sworn to faithful performance of visitor duties. And number four, that he has no salary position in office. In a review of page two of the certificate of the party endorsement that was submitted originally on July 23rd of 2019 to the Durham Town Clerk, of which I do have a copy here, anyone would like to see, there was a candidate, Connor Bates, who did not fulfill the requirement as stipulated in item number two of the charter. I reviewed the town's online taxpayer system and also visited the tax office to confirm that in fact the candidate was not a taxpayer of the town. This discovery therefore put Connor Bates in the category of not having been a qualified candidate to run in the 2019 election. I asked our first select person to review this with our town council, Richard Roberts of Alberden Sage. At the same time, the first select person was also soliciting chairs of all town boards for recommendations of revisions to the town charter. I reviewed Board of Finance minutes from 2019 through 2018 and I found inconsistencies with the election of officers procedure. In the years of 2018, 17, 16, 15, 13, and 11, the election of officers had taken place at the regularly scheduled December Board of Finance meeting. In the years 2014, 12, 10, and 9, there's no mention of an election. My recommendation as a charter revision at that time, and we're talking about early December, was to change the wording in the charter to make the regularly scheduled December Board of Finance meeting as the amended date going forward. Due to the pending decisions about the charter revision and also advice from our town council about the unqualified candidate placed on the ballot, the Board of Finance decided to follow through with the course of action that had taken place many years prior and held an election of officers to move forward in order to establish the leadership that was required for future meetings. I find it very inappropriate for our election to have been identified as illegal and also find it very curious that for the very first time since 2009, that this course of action was called into question. And I sincerely hope that there wasn't any partisan politics that's the driving force behind this inappropriate accusation.
I'll just say, thank you for your service to Durham and that you serve. I appreciate anybody who serves and I, uh, again, wholeheartedly disagree with you on a qualified elector. Um, I think that somebody pays taxes in more than one ways and you can pay taxes to the town different ways and I'm not going to discredit somebody, um, not going to alienate somebody from serving their community because they're a renter. I believe it's discriminatory and I will have no part of that, so I take a broad approach and I will continue to take a broad approach when it comes to who is a taxpayer. So thank you.
Rick, then Laura. Uh, Bob, you, are you done?
Well, if they wanna go, I have another.
Okay. Rick?
Um, I, um, I'm not familiar with a part of the charter and others besides, but, uh, I, I, I find it unacceptable to have, uh, that type of qualification to serve on that board because if, if it is so, you don't pay taxes and I find it hard to leave one way to go, you're paying taxes somewhere, state or federal. You should be an elector. I mean, we wouldn't.
The language says pay to the town.
Well, anyway, I, I, I don't agree with that policy. I mean, at one point, I became a voter, I had a pocket tax bill, I think of $25. Probably one time I, I don't know if that was the time I didn't pay taxes, but I don't think somebody should be precluded because they don't pay taxes locally. I think that viewpoint could be important too. I see viewpoints up here tonight and I consider it healthy here, the conversations that were around. Um, with regards to law, at one point when we were having numerous meetings on a resident trooper, a trooper from the borough, she was presenting a program, pointed out to the townspeople that the average driver in his little trip up street makes three motor vehicle violations. So we have plenty of laws on the books to be, uh, in, uh, violation of. Now, town meetings have been at eight o'clock for as long as I can remember and I kinda like that. I like to see it stayed out like. I realize that it could be Sunday morning at 2:00 AM, it's what the fact, you know, it's properly documented, but I like to see them on Monday nights at eight. The other thing is with regards to town council, if we make an assumption that all attorneys that served in that position were competent, um, one thing that, one little thumb that happened over the years was the town council was of the same party as the first selectman in all but one instance. And, uh, in that instance, it was questioned, he, he, his fees were questioned by the previous town council. And, uh, the irony of it was, even though this council was appointed by a selectman from the Democratic Party, the attorney was not only a Republican, but on a Republican State Central Committee. So that obviously was an appointment based on his legal qualifications just by making those comments. Not that the others weren't qualified, but usually it was, um, changes administration, they would change town council. Another, uh, concern is, and I bring this up when I see my state representatives, is oversight on the regional district board of 13. I mean, we had end of year transfers, they do it inside the board meeting, they were doing it inside a committee at one point. Um, I, I, they, we, we should not be set class citizens because we have a regional school system. And in my estimation, my rights are somewhat eluded because of it. Like this election business, it shouldn't be up to middlefield to say that we can't do it if they don't vote to accept the proposal that's coming before us. The other thing is, uh, with regards to the signs, um, I found that the, uh, package you put up on the, on the posts themselves, the reflectors, I found that very helpful. I considered it constructive. All my years in highway construction, which was mostly at the state and interstate level, um, the signs was, it was an engineering decision and politics paid very little into it. Um, it's, it's a good thing you're gonna look into it for this resident and it should be, it should be commended for it, but they're there for a reason, is a rule, for safety reasons. Um, and, you know, it's, it's an engineering decision and based on safety, then they should stay in place. Because we don't own the roads we live on or travel on. We have a right of passage and we have a right of safe passage on those roads. Um, I, I live on a curve and there's been two improvements on the sightline in my lifetime. And, uh, I was just thinking, might, maybe if you had some of those signs up on that curve too.
Thank you, Rick.
I'm sure my name is a little crazy, but from a safety standpoint, it should be objected and not, uh, political.
Thank you. Lauren?
I, I, a thought just came to me. I'm a taxpayer of the town and I'm over 65. Let's just say I was hung up or I wanted to apply for one of those positions. And I was forced to sell my house and I moved into Maravilla Meadows, which I now rent. But based on the current charter, I'm no longer a taxpayer.
Well, you may, you may have a car, so.
But you may not.
Well, I may or may not.
That's correct. You're right.
The thing is, is I think that's a different situation than the one that John is talking about. So maybe there's a way of, um, I don't know if you can get around saying that you have to be a taxpayer.
We can't change anything without a charter revision. So I'm sure when and if we get there, this will be discussed again.
It just comes across as very elitist, that we're not gonna allow people. And let me tell you, the person who ran, it was a 23 or 24-year-old who was paying his parents for his car taxes. So I just find it, we're gonna exclude that person who, by the way, had a finance background, was a CPA?
Well, I guess.
Why would we exclude that person?
I would have a problem, someone making decisions that doesn't experience what I'm experiencing and that's the tax. Just like I have a problem with a group telling me what schools they're gonna close when my kid may be in one of those schools. I think you should ask me and the people, the parents and the children in that school rather than just giving that ability to a, a small group.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm trying to, you know, show some comparison.
That's good.
Something to think about, if nowadays you can sue anybody for anything, has that been thought about? Like this person's an American citizen, can't they just turn around and say, I'm being discriminated against? You could hold up charters and laws of the Constitution.
Completely agree with you. Absolutely.
But couldn't this person turn around and say, no, you're discriminating against me? So that 30,000 legal budget you have just got bumped up to 90. And, and now you're not just dealing with that person, you're dealing with the news ramifications, you know, the press and all of that. What, what's, what's the best option? What do you do? Do you spend more money? Do you gotta worry about him saying, I'm being discriminated against, or this person? That's, that's a big deal. You could hold up every law, but if he steps foot in front of the camera, it's over. You're going to court. You're going to court.
Thank you.
I mean, where do you draw the line? I mean, how long's, how long's the person in office for or in that position for? Do you just kinda bite your tongue and move on?
So in our research, um, there was a period of time that qualification could have been challenged and that period at the time of our inquiry had passed. Bill?
As Republican town chair, I take full responsibility for having unqualified candidates on the ballot. It wasn't done with a system of tax at all. As far as a Board of Finance election, I don't know what else they could've done. They, they had a, a climate weather on the 17th, so they did their election on the 19th. They elected with a quorum, which is legal. That's a legal meeting. And I just think we're sitting here wasting a lot of time. What we really should be concerned with is getting another candidate to get on the Board of Finance rather than sitting here fighting about all this other stuff. That's just my opinion.
Thanks. Right there.
So we obviously all know that volunteerism is at an all-time low. Uh, I think we almost all fell off of our chairs at a meeting or two ago when EDC had six candidates for one position. Unheard of in the last five years at least in this town. So one point though, I hope you do revisit in charter revision is you do have people like Melinda Maples, who has owned a thriving business in our community for the last at least 10 or 15 years. Um, she leases one of our properties, town-owned properties, cannot sit on the agricultural commission based on the fact that she is not an elector. So there are, you know, there are the one in a million instances that I think I, or I hope you guys at least look into when you do charter revision.
Tristan, then Bob.
Um, when you guys are thinking of, um, I guess Democrat town committee or Republican town committee, there's a lot of people in this town that wanna volunteer. And I've been told by both committees, they have to come to you. And that's not the case. The case is that the town committees have to go find those people, but it should be the way that the people wanna come. They've tried and because they're not known in town by either the Republicans or the Democrats and they don't know anything about these people, they might give them a chance. So when they say they can't find people, there are a lot of people, I know of quite a few people who have asked me to pass on the word to a selectman to say, can I serve? Do you have to look outside your little groups of Republican town committee and your Democrat town committee? Those numbers are not big on those committees. Start looking outside, you have 7,500 people in this town to look at.
I can't speak for the Democrat town committee. I'm on the Republican town committee. I know we put stuff in the paper. We have all our members always asking people, I wish we could, we actively try.
I put it on the website. I sent out, I've sent out.
We tried, we put it on Facebook.
Yes.
We've tried and I, will continue to try, so I agree with you.
Bob?
They ask.
Bob?
Uh, yes, I wanted to speak to another item that was in the minutes from the last meeting and, um, I'm gonna read again what the comment was directly from the minutes themselves and it said, "Selectperson John received word from other elected officials who attended the December 19, 2019 Board of Finance meeting that gifts were given out at the meeting. He noticed that this was the same time and night that the chairman was voted in and quite a few people expressed concern for him over this. There is policy," I think that's supposed to be, "there is a policy on gifts and asked the Board of Selectmen how they would like to move forward with this issue." So what I did is, I went ahead and I reviewed the public document that's called the Town of Durham Code of Ethics. And in section two, it describes what a gift actually is. And it says that a gift is anything having monetary value, including but not limited to. to entertainment, food, beverage, travel, lodging, given or paid, or anything of benefit regardless of monetary value. In then section 3, it talks about the standard of ethical conduct, and it describes what a gift actually is. So this is section 3, Roman numeral 5, and it says, "No officer, official, or employee of the Town of Durham or member of his or her immediate family shall solicit or accept any gift from an independent contractor." I would like to inform you that I am not an independent contractor, as described in the policy, and therefore fail to see how this applied to the meeting of the Board of Finance. However, taking it further, I'd like to reference the general statutes for the state of Connecticut. Title 1, Chapter 10, the Code of Ethics, Sections 1-84, and it talks about acceptance of gifts. It says, "No person shall offer or give to a public official, candidate, or office, family members, or an associated business, and none shall accept anything of value, based on any understanding that the vote, official, or candidate would be or had been influenced thereby." Section 1-79 then defines what a gift in fact is. It further defines that there are many things that are gifts, and also things that a gift is not. One of the descriptors reads, "A gift does not include anything having a value of not more than $10, provided that the aggregate value of the things provided in one year had not exceeded $50." There's a reference in the minutes made by the first select person, John, that a memo should be sent out to all chairmen about the town ethics policy. My suggestion would be that perhaps he know what the policy is before he calls it into question. What I would like to say is that as the chair of the Board of Finance, no gifts were distributed at a meeting, at all. I will explain to you what did happen. The Board of Finance ended their meeting, and because we're a board who appreciates each other's differences, each other's background, each other for what we have to offer, because we are given items that need to be reviewed at meetings prior, and people take their heart and soul into creating spreadsheets, doing investigations, doing research, and trying to figure out the best way to do what we do as volunteers who don't get paid a stipend, I thought it was appropriate to simply say, "Isn't this nice that there's a board in this town where we are all different, but we all get along, and we learn from that? And as a result of people who come to our meeting during public comment, and are sometimes really not so nice, I thought it was nice to just say, 'Thank you for what you do, and I regret nothing, because I didn't violate any policy or break any state law.'"
Bob, I think there's a part of the Code of Ethics, Section 3, you know, you talk about gifts or favors, but you, in number 10, there, Roman numeral 10, but you conveniently forgot to look at Roman numeral 2, fair and equal treatment, Roman numeral 11, use of influence, and Roman numeral 12, representative of private interest. I think an argument could be made that it would fall under one of those. Regardless of that, no one was trying to embarrass you, but I do think, it was commented, a few people commented to me about they thought it was bad form, they didn't think it was really appropriate, especially the night a chairman was picked, and it was simply, why don't we redistribute the Code of Ethics, because maybe you were unaware of it, or we weren't even pointing you out per se, it was to everybody. So again, I don't want, I think we all want Durham to get along, and all our boards and commissions to work together, and, you know, again, thank you for serving, but there are parts of this that you neglected, and I think it's just a good, no one asked for an ethics investigation, and in fact, we specifically said, "No, we don't want to send this to the ethics." That wasn't really the point of it, it was, "Let's just make sure this doesn't happen again." Because I think most people would agree that doesn't pass the smell test, it's just not a good idea, and that's how it was presented to me by some other people who are boarders and commission members, they just felt it was uncomfortable, that's not what we do here in Durham. So, that's all.
Joe, you had your hand up.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Bill for his comments, and that 12, 14 years ago, I remember sitting here, and having a discussion, and making the comment, before I ever became involved in any of this activity in our community, that I could sit here and I couldn't tell who was a Democrat and who was Republican. And I think the people that are sitting here, people that are on the board, we really, as a community, we need to take a long, hard look at ourselves, and what we're doing to ourselves. We're a community, and whether it's an R or a D, we all live in the same place, our goals should be common, we should be working together, instead of spending how much ever time we spend here tonight, talking about stuff that we really shouldn't be talking about. And John, I'm extremely disappointed in you, extremely, that here I sit and listen tonight about this Code of Ethics, and at the end of last year, I brought up to the Board of Selectmen then, about Durham manufacturing, and I mentioned the Code of Ethics, and you went ballistic, along with one of your other fellow members at the time. So maybe you should read that code, and take a look at Durham manufacturing, you might look at it a little bit differently. Very disappointed, John.
Okay, thank you for your partisan comments there, appreciate them.
All right, Martin?
I just want to comment, as the chairman of the Democratic Town Committee, we certainly have fallen short in engaging everyone in the community, but we cannot find them all. I know the Republicans have paid for ads in the past, we've independently written letters, I believe in the past some chairmen have written letters together. We are not excluding anyone, we are not connecting with them, yes, but please, send them to us. That's how I get to know somebody, is because you know them, or you know them. Or bypass us, I don't care. You go tell Laura, she's going to come over and tell me, and I'll say, "Great." But I don't go knocking door to door looking for Board of Finance candidates, but maybe we need...
Mark?
Just real quick, I'd like to ask, I believe the 29th, two days from now, the council has its final day to appeal RZVA, and then if they don't, I believe there's three days for the town to enforce the rules that have been set. I would like to ask you promptly get the letter in the mail to them. I'd like to remind you, it took over seven months for my health complaint over the bedding of urine and feces dumped on my stone wall to be investigated, improperly investigated, and our incompetent CEO officer did do a very good job of that as well. So I ask, as a reminder, if they do not appeal, I want this done in a timely manner, as you have improperly informed us of an appeal process that has left us with depreciated home values. We trusted your word to us that there was no appeal for the buyright use of land, and we did do our due process, and getting our own attorney and looking into that, but that was under your directive, that you were doing the right thing, and we would not have the right to appeal. One other thing, the town's talking about the excess property being sold off, wasn't there a discussion about the property on Birch Mill, across from Timeout, being sold off as well, and what happened with that?
That was never on the list.
Never on the list?
No.
So that never had come up, and the property owner out behind that property never threatened to sue the town if you tried to sell that property?
No.
Specifically Frank DeFelice and his wetlands that he's been filling in?
No, that's not what he said. He said that he thought we would be subject to a lawsuit if we had used, created a use that was not proper.
So there was a discussion on that property?
But not to sell it. It was never on the surplus of town-owned property list. There was a discussion about whether or not we can use that as a parking area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? I think a motion to adjourn is in order.
And...
All those favor say aye.
Aye.